This is Tuesday, May twenty first, the time is four oh eight P M. I'm calling this meeting of the Westport School Committee to order. This is a budget work session. Um, as members know, the reason this session was called was a result of our last school committee meeting. Um, we wanted to discuss and give some direction to the business department on the resolution of our deficit of four hundred and forty six thousand three sixty one, which is the difference between the number approved at town meeting and the school committee's recommended budget for F Y twenty five. The business department has uh went through and made these recommendations to us. They went through six different iterations, if I'm correct, Michelle.
Yes.
Probably more than that along the way.
Way more than that, but yes.
And we had another work session at the beginning of May to discuss these and Michelle, you were, you know, you and your team were very responsive in getting us information and reflecting the committees asks in some of these figures, so we certainly appreciate that. And just to run down this list one more time for the committee, so the four hundred and forty six thousand in for the resolution of the deficit recommended to us, um, which was also a result of our recommendations from our uh work session in early May, was the new three year transportation contract, which we budgeted for and the final number came in a hundred and forty five thousand dollars under what we had budgeted, um, which is a good problem to have, so. You know, but we we saw a lot of other districts come in significantly higher, so that was, you know, when Michelle did her budgeting, that was what they accounted for there. Closure of the old high school is part of this. That's ninety thousand uh is a teacher and two T A's and a difference in retirements, which amounts to one thirty three. Custodian charge of food service, which we discussed is forty two. New Mac secretary savings is five thousand. We discussed that as well, and the summer school closings amounted to roughly thirty, just over thirty thousand um there. So first, before we get into some more discussion, I just wanted to note that I'm sure committee members saw, but the uh select board had sent over or Jim Hartner rather has sent over communication to us um asking the committee to send them a letter. Obviously, this wouldn't be done here because I would like to go over this in more detail with the committee first. If folks are available, maybe, you know, perhaps sometime next week to detail what a move would look like, the logistics behind that, where staff would go. Um, just so the committee is aware, we held a work session on that back in December. Um, but obviously with a new committee, I want to make sure that everyone is up to speed on that. Um, and has a chance to review it before we make any decisions um on that building. There's a lot involved in that and the town has expressed some concern. Um, as I'm sure you've all seen um in the email that was sent to us, but if that goes forward, the resulting figure, there would be roughly ninety thousand dollars that's made up of utilities and and uh maintenance staff for the building. So I will open discussion for the committee um to see what the thoughts are on these cuts um on the four forty six and we'll go from there.
I think Michelle did a great job coming out the best that we could do with the cuts that are happening. Um, the only thing is you you're looking at the high school, you know, if you're gonna, that's gonna change or not, but other than unless the town wants to pay that ninety thousand three hundred and seventy three, then that, you know, that's what it is.
Well, Gloria, actually, I'm glad you brought that point up because there's been a lot of talk in the town of the school forking over some cash to help defer the cost of of the building. Um. The concern that I have is is, I guess, around the dialogue around this topic that we're using, this is the same budget, the town and the school budget are all the town budget, right? So this is not a this, I don't think this should be viewed as an us versus them or any sort of whatever it may be, this is a, this is the town budget and the school side of the budget has been asked to, or the school department within that budget has been asked to make cuts. And this is obviously an expense for the for the district. Uh, so this is on the table at the moment, and this is a discussion that this is not new either. This is a discussion that we've been having for for quite some time. The long term building committee has taken up this this discussion for a period of time as well, so this conversation certainly isn't new in town. Um, regardless of whether we stayed or or went, the town would have to figure something out with the building. And I think there are, there are ways we can work together on it. I mean, the, you know, there was mention of of elections and whether that is some iteration of us using the new high school for for a polling place or utilizing the old building for it, if that's feasible, I think that something can be worked out there, so I I'm not, I wouldn't be too concerned about that. It's more logistics. And there are requirements involved in notifying voters and those sorts of things, but I think we can certainly make something work. The other issue is the fields, which we've also, the the field maintenance cost is reflected in this figure, so those have been taken out, so this we would still, the cost to maintain the fi- fields are still included in the F Y twenty five budget is my understanding.
Yes, it is. They are.
Perfect, and we would work that out with the town um also because they would certainly need to maintain those fields regardless of whether we were there or not uh to some degree.
Right, that dialogue that went back and forth with Jim today was I wanted to know, like, was there a discussion at last night's meeting? He said it was a brief discussion and there wasn't much discussion about it, which I found that to be very odd, seeing they had requested all this information and questions to us on Friday, and then we sent that all off this morning to them. So I found that weird that there was no more discussion, like there didn't seem to be any, and that in his conversation at one of the points was there was an electrician coming in in November. I did ask why he he didn't respond to that, which was unusual. He usually does respond to whatever is sent to him. Um. I said, well, what what I would recommend you do is, you know, send us an email of what the town is looking to have us do, and then he was like, he's not sure where to begin. Um, he went, you know, just around like having our maintenance staff look over the building, then he finally said his preference would be to winterize the building, close the doors, that the election schedule for November, that it seems like the com- the state is pushing communities to consolidate their election, their polling places to one place, and he had mentioned the new school if we would close down that day. We do have a P D schedule for that day, but we don't have school in session that day, so. You know, I mean, to me and Lisa could, you know, chime in a little bit that I don't see why we still couldn't continue that to be a P D day, just we could even move our P Ds to the elementary of the Mac for that day or separate them somehow. Or, you know, so, I mean, it didn't seem to be a big deal. I mean, they're really already, they have in the budget already for the new, the old high school, they already have budgeted everything but the fifty thousand.
Right.
So if we were to winterize it, you know, he's concerned that there's all kinds of things breaking down now. I'm not sure where he got that information from, because that was not the, wasn't in an email directly. I mean, I did state, yes, the well is an issue, yeah, the boiler is an issue, but these things have been issues for years. Even when we were in them, we were putting these on C I P C for a new well at one point, different, you know, and they would have had to pay for it anyway, so, you know. I don't, you know, I'm not sure the direction for the committee, but.
That's a, that's an important point, Michelle, that oh, those figures were included in the town budget, so.
Correct.
Whether they're, they have to make up an additional fifty thousand or whatever the numbers, I mean, it's not, we're not vacating the building and giving full con- full uh, you know, the town's not taking on a new expense that they didn't previously have is is the point, right? This is just a a an increase of, you know, whatever it would cost to maintain apart from our budget that we did.
Right, and even if it was just a building walkthrough every morning.
Right, sure.
Our heat in our building has been off for, I I don't, I would say maybe a month, at least month to two month, month to six weeks, so you know, maybe it's involving a walkthrough and, you know, if they wanted to work together with us, whoever's doing our morning check in could do the same check in, we could make that agreement with them. You know, the other piece to it is, I know that a lot of the basketball leagues rent out the building in the winter. They only use the winter, they use, they only use the gym and they use a bathroom. You know, we should, we could come up with our list of who does use that and how much do they pay and increase that amount. So we increase that amount and they're responsible for cleaning that piece, you know, whatever leagues are in there using it, and the next league that comes in has to say hey, this is the mess that we found this gym in when we came in, or this is the mess that we found the bathrooms in, but again, we still would need to increase what we charge, because we charge very, very little for them to use that space, you know, and that's talking to people in the community that do use it, and they're like, you can't go anywhere else to rent that, a space like that for the little money that we do rent it, so. You know, again, we've been generous with the community to make sure that people have access to it, so. You know, I get that it's, you know, would be detrimental to people not being able to use it, but I think that's a conversation that, you know, we could have in discussing with them, but I think we, I think the committee, if the committee continues to follow their lead, they'll never had have us out of that building.
Right.
And even if the boiler was to go or a well was to gonna go, they're gonna still complain that it was us and we should have been maintaining it. We've been maintaining it. Mike had maintained that building for years and we're lucky it lasted.
Right. Yeah, I I think also another, another angle to this is it would put more, I'm I'm sorry, Lisa, I just saw you had your hand up.
I just have a clarifying question, Michelle. When we take in money for renting the gym, does that go to the town or does that go to the school?
No, it stays in the school to help offset the um basically any of the utilities and the use of the custodian cleaning down there, so we don't send that to them, that stays within our operating budget, not operating, but we run it through like these, like, not student activities, but one of the revolving accounts, that money comes in and goes back out again. But we charge like very little. We don't even charge enough to cover what the cost is.
So theoretically, if we weren't here, the town could take that over and it could be a revenue for the town.
Correct.
Which they currently do with, I believe, the annex, the rec department rents out the the gym that's there.
Yes.
Um, so that we have some sort of structure or mechanism for that.
Right.
So I I I mean, I'm assuming they could do the same with that if they wanted to do it for that building. Um.
What is the cost to rent it out?
I don't have those on me. I didn't bring any of, I didn't bring that piece with me. Sorry, I apologize for that. I don't, um.
It is super, super low.
Yeah, it's very low. I can't.
I have it. I have it if you need it.
Okay.
So for the gym, we charge thirty five an hour or two hundred a day. Field use is also twenty five an hour, and then it says a hundred a day. Uh, auditorium, twenty five an hour, two hundred a day. Cafeteria or classrooms, twenty dollars an hour up to a hundred and thirty a day.
Right, so that doesn't even cover time and a half for a custodian filling in to clean that at all, so.
I don't know that that's necessarily accurate either, um, or what people are charged, because I see, I've seen some of those in the past and I don't even know how that would be calculated. Um, you know, to say a, let's say a random baseball team wants to rent our field. I I don't know that somebody's sitting there and asking them how many times and how many games or whatever to charge them accurately. Um.
Right.
You know, just from the outside perspective, um, I I'm not quite sure how that works. Uh.
Right, I talked to one of, yes, I talked to one of the town leagues that rented for basketball and they were like, it is peanuts what you guys charge for that building. Like, for us to do basketball, it's peanuts. I think they've just come up with a random number, so if the league needs to borrow it, you know, twenty times from this date to this date, they kind of come up with some random number. Unfortunately, it's been what it's been for like years now.
Yeah, I think that's, you know, definitely, those numbers have definitely outdated themselves. Um. And, you know, if we had to look into it and and we end up you know, in the same situation, um, I I think revisiting those numbers would be a, would be a smart move. Um. And and more, and probably getting um a better handle on how to manage it and um you know, know, know who's in there and who's using it and when and um and everything else, you know, I understand. You know, our own town leagues, that's our own kids, obviously, um, and, you know, I I completely understand, you know, maybe a lower rate or, you know, doing all we can for them, but, you know, there's at this point, there's a lot of outside organizations that are using them, um, or reaching out to use them and, you know, not to uh not to be, you know, a price gouger or anything, but I I think we need to, you know, bring those, bring those rates up to par with, you know, what's being charged around us, because um, I agree with Michelle, anybody, anybody and everybody that you talk to that has rented from here, um, they're surprised at how low our uh our rates are.
Right, right. Yeah, I agree. I think, I think if the, if we maintain use of that building, that should definitely uh, you know, be revisited there. The other aspect to this too, which I think is important to note is is I think there would be some additional potential administrative support for staff currently at the buildings if if staff were to move to other places. I think that's one of the the aspects here. Um. You know, so just another thing to think about with with this building, the other another piece of this, which also occupies the building, is the other school time, so that will have to, you know, I know I know um uh the director of the program is already or is is looking to work on on what that would look like if if the building is is uh if we leave the building, so.
Which, which we did do that last week. We did go over to that building and and it it seemed to, from what the, what we're planning on doing and working with Jen and Lisa had gone over and Tom and we worked with the building principal, I mean, we were able to, I think, fit every single grade level in that Jen has in the program into a space, so I think it worked out fine based on that. I mean, we've got the map of going into the new school, um, taking one room, I think, at the elementary school. You know, everything seemed to kind of smooth out. I think our biggest thing for us is space for filing cabinets, like filing system is basically because we've had files there for years. We've been windling them down and going through them, but I think that probably is the biggest challenge right now is where to put that, but again, we're, we're gonna meet, um, hopefully at the end of this week or the beginning of next week to kind of talk about that and see what we have, where is everybody going? How much room is in which spaces? You know, things like that, so.
And is this something, just so the committee knows, um because I wouldn't want to move forward with this if if staff weren't comfortable with the move, so are staff at the, at the old high school on board with this or?
Most of us are, um. The business office, because they have been there for so long, they're they're very comfortable in their situ- like, in their assignments, so, you know, in their area, so anything new is not they're not thrilled over because it also involves them having to take their space. I mean, we did look at the space that they are in, I think Laurie and I looked at, the space that they would be going to, and they would be able to bring all, they'd be able to bring three of them into that area with um filing cabinets that are currently used. What would not be able to fit in their office would be the filing system that's held downstairs. So, you know, we're, we're gonna look at that and try to kind of see what we have and what, where things could go, I mean, it's, it's like when we asked the town to move in with us, they were like, you know, no, they're very like territorial, they just like what they have. And I get it, you know, when you've been there for twenty eight, thirty years, like you, you're like, oh, no, I don't want to move, this would be a disaster, but it, you know, it is what it is, that we all have to make that arrangement and get through it.
Right, and it's a, going back to this this discussion here, it's, it's, you know, it reflects as a ninety thousand dollar you know, savings on our budget, so that's one of the the items here. Um.
Can I just add to what um Michelle was saying? And to piggyback on what you were saying earlier about um a presence at the other schools, because of how lean we are um, as a staff, it's definitely gonna enhance the um accountability in those buildings and I feel the safety and security in those buildings. Um, and if you all were to come to the old high school and take a walk around and see how it's degrading, um, I think there are health concerns here too.
Right.
And I think that's, I think that's where the top, the town is feeling like we're just letting a building go and not take care of it, and that's not the case, like, the building itself is just, it's an older building, it's a great building, like, if if they were to put all the town offices in there and bring the recreation department in and the council on aging in and, you know, spruce it up, paint things up, have maintenance people in there, like brightening things up, cleaning, you know, updating the toilets or whatever. It would be a great building for us to stay in to be able to have, like, UMass Dartmouth and some of these places, Bridgewater, come in and run night classes. You know, have all of our meetings held there for all the town meetings held there with plenty of space, I think. It's, but again, like, I get it for them, they don't want to move either, and they've got other, there are other departments that don't want to move as well.
Melissa, I see your hand up.
Thank you. So I think, um, I mean, I don't know how the rest of the committee feels, but I think that um, for the closure of the old high school that our administrate, our administrative uh staff has given it, has been very thoughtful in making this decision. I see there's a lot of pros to, you know, moving out of the old school, I think in regards to what the town may think or not about us, um, and and I mean, no disrespect, but I don't think it really matters. I think we have to do what's best for our school and for our students, and at this time, it's getting out of the high school, and I think, um, again, no disrespect, but unless anybody disagrees with that, can we move on to the next? Because I I really think that I mean, the the argument or the counter really is about what the town thinks, but, you know, they could have given us more money and they chose not to, so. Um, I'm okay with moving on to the next item.
Sure.
Thank you.
Well, Chris, I want to give you an opportunity to, I see your hand up.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, and apologies, I'm having some major connectivity issues, so not on video, but um, I I do, first of all, thank you again for everyone's uh efforts to to get these these cuts and and to get this uh all put to, put together, including uh with regard to the 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 closure here. Um, I am, I I do have some concerns as to the actual logistics of a move. Um, I think that there is, clearly, um there is a need, not just in the in the savings, but there is a need to uh to um get out of that, get out of the building as it is, um, as it's, as it sits right now. Uh, but I do have some concerns regarding, again, the exact logistics of how a move would be accomplished, specifically regarding, I'm curious as to what kind of I T equipment is is there and how how severe of a move that would be, um, in addition to the business office and and a couple other uh specific uh staffing or specific uh equipment questions and everything, so I also want to, want to ask the uh the administration as as far as what type of expenditures are going to be incurred uh with with the move itself. Um, so, a- a- and the the other I guess, you know, as as Chair of the Long Term Building Committee, this, I I do agree that this has been, this has been uh talked about for quite some time. Um, I I do think that there are some potential uses for the high school down the road that are not necessarily um gonna be school related, but at the same time, I I I do, there there is a bit of a code question involved, and and any kind of continued presence does bring in uh the ability to continue, uh, you know, using the 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 building for its uh its intended use code wise uh without triggering any new um any new uh code regulations or or upgrades that would be necessary, and and I'm wondering if it is, if there is some possibility of perhaps leaving even just one uh department, one person, again, I'm I'm kind of going back to the I T, uh, just thinking in terms of what it would take to actually get everything out of there. Um, you know, i- is that something that can be discussed down the road as well? Um, so I guess I'll just, I'll swing it over to uh Michelle and just ask if if you think that that's any, anything that could be considered moving forward.
I think as far as, I I think one of the things that I'd be concerned about leaving one person over there, even like the I T is that the town is gonna be like, well, you still have somebody over there, so you're still losing, using light, still electricity, still heat. I think that would be the concern there. I did speak to I T today because I wanted to get an understanding of what would require for them to do their piece. Um, they have just a lot of equipment. I think they need to go through the equipment personally. I think the equipment has just kind of been sitting there, it's been an easy keep to just keep it all instead of going through it and saying, you know, we could bring so much to the Mac, so much to the West, so much to the elementary school, let's look at what we have. Um, I know that the um head of maintenance, Manny, has been cleaning out every single garage and every basement to try to, I think, clean up, but also like has an idea that there might be a move happening coming up. Um, the other piece to this is to, we have the storage, like, a lot of that storage downstairs. If, you know, there's options to look around, I mean, there's that house on the campground. I get that it's an old house and it's just sitting there, but if they were to kind of do the garage, the the doors on all of it and secure the buildings and our, if our filing cabinets were lock filing cabinets, again, is it the perfect situation? No. Could we get a pod that goes over the elementary school and that's where files are kept? And you put it in the back, so it doesn't look like it's standing out like a sore thumb, you know, enough to house, you know, maybe twenty filing cabinets. Um, the move typically, when we we've kind of become very perf- um I guess you could say we're professionals at the moving, seeing the middle school issue has happened. Um, typically in the past, Kim Willett has contacted the sheriff's office and we utilize them, and the only cost that we ever had is we feed them lunch and breakfast. So, and that comes from the school lunch program, so we typically have it organized ahead of time, they bring in these big trucks, they come in, they, we use them for the, however many days it is, we book it early enough, and if it takes two weeks to do the move, it takes two weeks to do the move, so the downtime there may be that people are almost forced into taking their vacations during that time, so that way everything is labeled, everything is marked, here you go, this is where you're going, and you know, piecework or something of that nature, so I think as far as the expense is concerned, we would need to check the internet piece. Um, I would hate to shut the internet off there. I mean, a lot of that cost is combined, we we get some E rate reimbursement, and what that is, it comes from because we have students in the building, we receive E rate reimbursement, which is sixty percent of whatever the internet costs are. Because we still have students in our out of school time, we can still access that money for the billing at our old high school. So that I would need to do a little researching on, that is it worth us removing and shutting the internet off there, or is it not worth shutting the internet off there? Um, everything's in the walls, it's wired, it's hot wired in, uh, we have remote access. You know, you wouldn't want to get rid of it, because if the town decided to open up the building and would need to run a meeting there or would need to run voting there or something, we'd want them to be able to still have that access, but it it could play both sides, where we may still get our benefit that we need and by just leaving it there, so there's a little piece there, there's some maintenance equipment at the old high school, which I'm sure that Manny is dying to get in there and kind of clean that out, because that is years and years of storage, you know, they've done a nice job cleaning it before in the past, but I think you know, looking at where we are today compared to where we, how we used to like take you know, different spindles to fix something or or just different product to fit, most of that stuff is probably rotted by now or not even usable, so I think for the biggest expense for the move would be the actual move, and again, we use the sheriff's office to do that move. Um. There would be still some questions that I would need to get answers to as far as the internet staying there. How, what would the timeframe be for Manny to clean out the garage area? Um. We plan to do a walkthrough, like, we, I spoke to the business office to try to do a walkthrough before this week's done, so we can see what do we have. I know the town has gone through it plenty of times, so they keep on going through and taking stuff from there. But for us, our purpose, I think we have some stuff in the cafeteria. Um, we have storage in the garage area, technology area, and then in the business offices, so I, I think it's doable. I think it's a matter of the storage, where would these filing cabinets that have been in the basement for years, where do they go? That's the biggest question.
All right, thank you, Michelle. I think uh this certainly isn't the last conversation we'll have on the closure of the building, so. You know, we'll, we'll, uh, if you can just, like you've done today and sending us what Jim sent, you know, just keep us up to date on on any movement that happens and.
I will, and then I can even give you an update at the next the school committee meeting of like what our conversations have been of filing cabinets and we'll try to get some measurements in of where we think we're going and how many cabinets and space and
Perfect.
See if we can get more information.
Great. Okay, any other discussion or questions from the committee on the other items in the resolution of the deficit?
All set. I'm good.
Okay. All right. And like we mentioned, going into F Y twenty six, you know, we'll have a, I'm sure there'll be a discussion on the free cash issue again, so you know, again, something to, for the committee to be aware of going into the next cycle, which will start in the fall already, and that'll be here quick. Um, as we all know, it always comes up very quickly, so, um you know, just something for the committee to keep an eye on going into the next year. Uh, you know, we're we know the formula won't change, and it didn't happen this year, and then that's the direction of the select board and the finance committee have gone, so. Um, the formula will remain the same, so it's a matter of the the free cash question, um, as it has been for the last number of years. So that'll certainly be a big topic of conversation uh in the next cycle. Um. Any discuss, further discussion on, from the committee on the resolution of the deficit? Any discuss, further discussion on, from the committee on the resolution of the deficit?
Yeah, I I again, Evan, I I know I mentioned it in our last meeting. I think the only other um, you know, concern that I never want to lose sight of um is the grounds, um, you know, for athletics, obviously. If we were to, you know, go through with all this and make all these moves and, you know, completely, you know, take the school department out of that building, um, and the town takes it over, you know, again, just that worry. Um, and, you know, to save, to save ninety thousand, you know, what's it going to look like for us to have to possibly um rent and transport um our athletic teams to go play and practice elsewhere? Um, and, you know, how much of a savings will it end up being in the end? Um, I don't know the cost of what that could be, um, but it could get pretty high, um, pretty quick. Um, and again, there's not a lot of places to go. Um, as far as I know, there's not a lot of random, you know, fields and
Right.
um, gyms and things like that that are around. Obviously, they're all at schools and they're all being used by other schools at the same time that we would need them. Um, so that just gets really, really difficult, you know, if if this could all be done and we could have some kind of guarantee from the town that we would still have access to all the fields and things, then, you know, I'm all for it, but I would just hate, again, for that rug to be to be pulled out from under us. Um, and then we're spending ninety thousand dollars in transportation and rental fees and everything else.
Right. No, that's, that's an important point. And I think part of the the communication that the committee, you know, wo- wo- would send to the town in the event that this goes forward would would be that, that's a, that's a, we would need to maintain the use of the fields in in the back. Um, that that's, I mean, that's pretty important. We know going into, it wouldn't be an issue in the fall, but it, uh, from the conversations that have been brought up, but going into the spring, it certainly would be a a concern. So I think including that in the communication from the committee is uh is important because that, you know, like you said, that's, there aren't many options for for use there. So uh, I agree with you.
Yeah, I I think too, I, and I agree with Jason because we have like spent a lot of time for many years trying to figure out this whole transportation, use of fields and whatnot. I think if we, and well, the school committee makes some type of agreement with the town, you know, kind of like how we did that question and answer with them the other day, but now we put together some type of document that basically spells out, you know, the school department will maintain, you know, uh, the fields, we we will do the mow, like specific to like from what field to what field. You know, I think there's pieces that I know that it costs us an extra fifty dollars to have the landscaping company mow the front lawn. So we've already budgeted for doing the lawns with the landscaping company. So maybe in good faith, that's one of our trade-offs that for fifty dollars, we continue to keep that. We will continue to mow that lawn, you know, we will continue to do with the mowing of the lawn there. You know, maybe at the time we're done, that we're still using the garage temporarily. And, you know, maybe we are looking at having one of our staff go in and do a building check every day like they already do. I think for the amount of time it usually takes them to do a building check, it's usually thirty minutes walk first thing in the morning. But if they're having access to the garage and, you know, I think we kind of look at like, okay, we do need the garage to keep our storage for our other buildings. So we keep the garage. We're going to maintain the whole from grass seasoning, we'll continue to mow the whole thing, but we get first priority of the fields. Fields, first priority is us and people can't go through the town to, you know, reserve fields over and above the school. The school gets first priority from this time of year to this time of year. I think spelling that out on the school committee's end might be a good way to like, put it in stone that, you know, we will continue to maintain. So at least the building does continue to look like it's used and maybe it's used for maintenance. And maybe we look at renting the space we handle, like we've been handling the use of facilities for the basketball, but we're a little bit tighter on it and we charge more money. So that little bit of money helps to offset a little bit of, say, whatever. I think there's some things there to look at to try to get this in stone and not just assumed.
Right.
Yeah, I like, I like that, Michelle. I think that's very smart. That would be smart on our part.
That's great. Lori, could, could you add that to our agenda for the next meeting to discuss those items on the old, on the building? Thank you.
And I'll try to get a little more um information on what leagues are using the basketball, um, what what leagues are using the fields and the basketball courts to see how it's being utilized and whatnot. So we kind of have a little bit of idea of what we're spending now, what's a reasonable amount to charge. And, you know, maybe, you know, I don't want to give up money to them, trust me. But at the same time, you know, in good faith, we we say, we're, we know we're not sending our people in to clean it. So the revenue that's brought in for the use of that building to help offset the fifty thousand that the town's no longer going to receive, we might take in ten thousand. So now they're only looking for forty. But again, I think documenting this all out and what that looks like and having more information is, might help us in the transition, but it it shows us in good faith, working together with the town to not just say, here you go, it's up, you know.
Right. Michelle, could you please send the recommendations you just ran through in an email to the committee before committee, our next full committee meeting or regular? Thank you. Okay, on uh the other items on the list or any additional items, are there any further discussion? Um, I know these numbers, the goal of the committee, which was brought up at our May second work session um in resolving the deficit, even, and this was prior to town meeting also, was to minimize the teacher impact, which, you know, was, I I think Michelle was responsive to in in bringing us these figures. Um, you know, with the teacher and the and the TAs and difference in retirement. So I think that's reflected here in this budget. You know, our goal as a committee is always to to do the best for our students and minimize the impact in the classroom because they shouldn't be impacted by, you know, changes made by the town or finance committee recommendations or, you know, our job is to provide the best experience for 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 our students and that's always the focus. So um, you know, I think this, the resolution here um reflects the folk, that that goal of the committee, uh, so certainly appreciative of that. Are there any further comments or questions or discussion from the committee on any other items in the budget resolving the deficit?
No.
Um, I I did see some things um in the proposed budget that um, you know, I I kind of question um in terms of you know, again, just going over it quickly and and certainly, you know, I I I'll admit that going over the uh the last column with the percentage over twenty-three, twenty-four and and looking at those numbers, um, you know, some of them certainly stand out. You know, uh, a forty-five percent increase um to to a certain line for, which comes out to about thirty thousand dollars, um, you know, is certainly um an eye-opener for me. Um, again, and, you know, there were certainly some other things. You know, a a twenty-nine percent increase um for legal services. You know, those are things I don't necessarily know, um, you know, what it costs. I'm looking at previous years and and just looking at, you know, the budget sheets that are here. And um I see a lot of things that, you know, I did have questions about and things like that. And I don't know what kind of explanation I could get or um, you know, how readily available that is or if somebody needs to now research it. But um, I see some places where there are some, you know, pretty big increases that I don't necessarily know. Um, you know, the reasoning behind.
So I can, I can respond to a couple of them right now, just briefly, Jason, so if it's helpful. So the Director of Human Resources, that line jumped up forty-five percent because um, the part-time HR person we have, her salary was coming out of the S R funds. So for FY twenty-five, it's now coming out of the school budget because it was the last year, this year, that we could um cover that. So that would account for that forty-five percent increase in that line item. Um, I don't know if that helps you.
Michelle, the only other increase that would have been reflected on the salary side because the committee was cautious of using S R for for salary was, was the, which has been discussed by the Finance Committee, was one science teacher, correct?
Correct. One science, right, that was, and that was, you'll see that line item, you'll see an increase in their salaries as well because the science teacher was S R as well in the high school side. And on this side, the other thing, the legal expenses, one of the things that happened with us. So two years ago, because obviously we were in COVID and just finishing with COVID, we were able to decrease the expenses a little bit for the legal end because we weren't using them as much because we weren't always like in full session. And then all of a sudden, we didn't, so we then had to turn around and start increasing them again. So again, part of that, I, you know, again, we're going to see how this year goes. We do use them a lot more than we ever have. I will say that. I I do. And I think Lori can agree to me there that we we do use the attorneys like very frequently. And, you know, maybe it is something that we, I think, what, you know, what superintendent does, he try, he wants to be safe. He wants to cover the district to make sure that, you know, when we we don't run into any troubles at all. So it uh, that budget line has kind of fluctuated a little bit, was never, I don't think as high as it is right now.
Yeah, that, you know, definitely since twenty-one, twenty-two, when this um budget goes back, it hasn't, it hasn't been um, hasn't been there. Um, I know we expended forty-six thousand in twenty-one, twenty-two and then down to twenty-seven thousand in twenty-two, twenty-three. Um, and we, and it was approved for our double that, um, you know, for this year, obviously, I don't know where we stand um in terms of expenditures now, but increasing another seventeen thousand on top of it. You know, again, it's a a good chunk of money that, you know, I I look at the, you know, the revolution of deficit deficit that you worked hard on and and is presented in front of us here. And, you know, we could take out some of these lines, um,
Right.
if it's not needed, um.
I can do a little bit more research on that to see why, we might have increased it the way we did because of contractual increases as well. You know, not contractual increases, I'm sorry, but the W F T negotiations. So some of that may be reflected in there, but again, that would be more twenty-four than twenty-five. But I, let me, let me do tomorrow, just kind of do a little checking on that, see what I can see.
Perfect. Thank you.
And I would think, I think you mentioned the increase in twenty-one compared to the following year. That may have, I think that was also a contractual year, if I'm not mistaken.
Probably, yes.
Yeah, okay. So that, I mean, that could be part of it. Um, Tom, I know, see you have your hand up. Thank you, I'm mute.
Thank you. I think going forward, um, I think the committee needs to expect a significant increase in legal fees. For example, we now have a third group, three-year-old who will be coming in. And uh they're going to require significant services. And then it becomes a issue between lawyers about what services the uh school jurisdiction should uh be accountable for. So if you uh take a look at all of the issues that are facing schools today, not just Westport, uh, but you can expect your legal fees to go up. They're not going to go down. And you can cut it if you want, but, you know, again, don't be surprised when I go to the committee and say, you know, we 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 lost a uh, we lost in a meeting with uh an I E P or with an advocate or, you know, whatever. So, I mean, it just, there's a, there's a, you know, real situation.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think it's a matter of cutting it. I think it's just a matter of making sure that we're diligent when the services are needed and used. I think that's the, that's the, you know, I'm not saying that they're not being used when, or they're, or they're being used when they shouldn't be. I'm, I think that's the, the point. And I was going to ask too, Tom, I'm glad you brought that up, that some of those are are special education related, right? The expenses there, I would think that the increase in required services would equate to an increase in legal fees, I would think, that's.
Well, we just, we just received a a PR, uh, P R S complaint that we're going to have to deal with. It's a completely unreasonable request. We've got plenty of data that's going to suggest that the complaint is frivolous. Nonetheless, I mean, you know, I'm not a lawyer and I don't play one on TV. And when somebody brings a lawyer, it's been our general rule that we're going to bring our lawyer. Uh, but if if the committee has a different approach, I'll be happy to uh readjust that thought. I work at the pleasure of the committee.
I certainly see, obviously, that there's a, you know, things are going up. Um, and obviously, we're going to have to, you know, budget. I just, you know, again, um, you know, we were, we were involved in voting on an issue last week that, you know, I I see as something that could have been, um, you know, probably easily um nipped in the bud before it got to the point it did. And, you know, we have to bring in our lawyer for, you know, something petty over, you know, a nine hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar stipend. I mean, a nine hundred and seventy-five dollar stipend. Um, and, you know, I I see things like that that are, probably could be avoided. Um, and I don't know what that costs us in in terms of bringing in lawyers, but, you know, we all had to be here for a meeting that I think with some background knowledge and 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 probably some strategical meetings around postings and and things like that. And, you know, could have been avoided, that's for sure.
Melissa?
Well, I'll ask the committee right now, first of all, I'll ask the committee, how many level grievances have you had?
Hold on, Tom, Melissa, Melissa has her, has her hand up here.
Sure.
Yeah, um, I would um respectfully like to disagree with that. I've been on this committee now for the past three years and the amount of um grievances that we've had have been incredibly minor compared to what we could have. The administration works incredibly hard to um do what's right and they cannot and will not be held accountable for frivolous um grievances that are, that are put forth by any union. I mean, that's that, we can't, they can't be held responsible for that and they can only do what's allowed in the contract. So I I just, I disagree and I I actually, I I take a little offense to it because um our superintendent has worked at the direction of this committee. Um, and again, has worked incredibly hard as well as the administration and should never be uh held responsible for something else that the union decides to um put forth, whether it's frivolous or not, they cannot back down and go against um what is true and correct with the contract because the minute it's only a frivolous nine hundred and seventy-five dollars is the next minute it turns into ten thousand or higher. So they have to follow the letter of the law regardless. Thank you.
Well, it's an important point, Melissa. I think it, you know, the committee doesn't, you know, when we get handed a grievance, that's, you know, that's the situation where we're, you know, that we're put in. So we have to take it as it, as it sort of comes to us, um, you know, that's.
Well, I don't, I do not deny that for a second. Um, and I know that, you know, we have to meet, um, you know, their actions with our own actions. And I completely agree with that. It's more of the the background be before, um, you know, that I, that I questioned. Um, it's not what we had to do and and how we have to, um, you know, counter. Um, it's more so trying to avoid situations that don't necessarily need to happen.
And again, I'm sorry, I don't want to continue to argue back and forth, but I will say that, again, it's not, I'm not talking about the committee. I'm talking about how the administration handled it. They did the best that they could to try to get our students assistance. They worked, they even spoke to someone within the union who was kind of like, yeah, it's okay. And then once they moved forward, it it landed up turning and then turning into a grievance. So I I can see where this is headed and I don't believe that our administration is to blame for that at all. And we can't look at saying, okay, well, we need to focus on blame. No, what we need to focus on is how we can best work within our means to serve our students. And this second, yes, I I I just, it's uncalled for.
If the job is posted the same way as the other ones were posted at the other schools, then that situation doesn't happen.
So, no, you 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 keep coming back because you had, you know, the you, again, uh, Jason, you had previous experience in the district. You've seen things at a different light than some of us did. And then you also had some other experiences that maybe weren't so good. And I think you're bringing that into this and this needs to be focused on what's right for our students versus having any type of vendetta or anything else against this, the the district or whatever. And I'm really hoping that we can focus on what's best for our students and how we can work together instead of picking apart things. And honestly, that's all what I'm saying from the get-go. So I I don't, I don't want that to continue. I want us to be able to work together for what's best for our students.
That's the goal of this committee is to work together on on issues and and keep the interests of our students and our staff at, you know, on our minds. So that's, that's what we're here to do is support them, right, and work together, so.
Absolutely.
All right. Are there any other uh items from the budget? We wanted to discuss.
Uh, yes, um, I did see the Stardom Young Program and that continuing, um, which is certainly, um, you know, a good chunk of change again. Um, and just looking for some clarification there, um, it looks to be um about the same expense as um summer school in terms of um. um about the same expense as um summer school in terms of um to the district and you know, I think maybe the thoughts of, you know, one versus the other and and having one over the other or which one's more important or um, if we need to even have one at all. Um. You know, I I think those programs are certainly valuable. Um. You know, but I think to the tune of around twenty five thousand, maybe if I was, if I'm accurate, um, in that figure, I know it's spread out amongst the different buildings um and not necessarily in one item, one line item for the district. Um, but again, is there, you know, can we maybe do some individual clubs and not necessarily a Stardom Young program? Um. You know, which I think would be you know, a savings maybe to the district. Um. If we, if there's a, if Stardom Young, you know, thinking of some of the um previous offerings within Stardom Young Flag Football, um or um maybe robotics or, you know, whether it be academic or athletic, um, could those be individual clubs, hire an advisor um like most of our other clubs and just go with it, um, go that route instead of um you know, uh, I'm not even sure how it's broken up. It's in so many line items um with advisors and and things like that. And I think the West has, they have twenty five hundred in one line item, they have five thousand in another line item. Um. And then, you know, it goes on to other, the other schools as well. Um, twenty five thousand in a line item, um, another thousand in a line item. You know, so it's it's um, it's more than actually I actually thought. And I see it again, um, another twenty five hundred and a fifteen hundred at the middle high.
That's for the Stardom Young, you said?
Correct.
Okay.
You know, so I think, you know, you're up over thirty, thirty five thousand dollars um going towards Stardom Young that you know, I love the, I love the program, I love the idea of the program, you know, does it need to be, does it need to be that? Can it be individual clubs ran through the schools, um, you know, based off of um, you know, what they think um is needed or necessary or where the interest is again from the students. Um, Flag Football, I think, has been a a pretty good one. Um, and I saw the kids out there, um, I think it was two days ago, maybe, um, or maybe even yesterday afternoon. Um. And I think that's awesome. Um, and certainly something that's that's beneficial to the kids and getting them up and moving after school, but can it, can we just have a flag football club? Um, and even if it's two flag football clubs and one of them's in the fall and one of them's in the spring, you know, for a couple thousand dollars as, you know, as I just see, you know, that's a really, really big expense.
Right. Any uh administration, have any comment on this Stardom Young program? Actually, has that always been funded out of the, none of that was funded from S R, was it? Or was that partly?
It was for a length of time, it was funded from S R. And now it's la, uh, this year, I believe, is the first year that it was in the budget and it's being budgeted again for next year.
Okay. Okay. Anything else from the committee? Uh, Melissa, I'm sorry, I just saw your hand up.
That's okay. Um, so thank you, Jason.
At the same time.
Yeah, no, I know it's hard. Thank you, Jason, for um for finding, you know, first finding something in the budget that was uh, you know, non academic. Um, I will say though that um the Stardom Young program was started um because we weren't having that um can I say that? We weren't having the programs that were needed for our students across all of the the grades in the schools. So we needed to find someone to come in who would be able to provide uh that for our schools. And they've done that in a way that has not only engaged our younger students, but have engaged um all of our schools, which um has really provided something that um has been missing in our sports program for a while. So for me, um I would not be interested in taking out the um the Stardom Young program, um, because regardless, we would have to land up replacing it with something like you had mentioned, clubs and that. At this point, we have, we finally have something that's organized around those sports and clubs that has been really successful. And so for me, I I wouldn't be interested in um considering that as a as resolving the deficit. But I do thank you for for finding that as a conversation for the committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa. And I'll add also that a lot of these line items um in here, it it's important for this discussion, of course. Um, but this is also important to bring up during our, you know, when we look at our F Y twenty six budget and forming that and have starting to have those discussions as well. Um, Gloria, I see you, you raised your hand, yep.
Right, Stardom Young, is it not, is it sports? But isn't it other things too? I think there was video in it or did they do other things in Stardom Young or is it just sport?
Yes, other things.
Right, because they had like a video club and doing different things. So it was, yeah, that, and they did a very good job with that. I remember that. Okay, that was.
Okay. Okay, any further comments? Ready? Okay. All right, seeing none. Um. I will note that, so this will give our business office some direction um to resolve the deficit here. That's the committee's pleasure um with what was recommended. I will note, as I just did, that going into F Y twenty six, a lot of these conversations will come up again. Um, especially, you know, on the line items, Jason, you mentioned some of the items there. Um, we can certainly discuss those in detail as we start those discussions in early fall. And the finance committee, we start to meet with them in October, we did this past year, so we'll have a proposed budget soon. Um, you know, around the start of the school year, sometime around then going into there. So uh, a lot of these discussions will continue. But for the F F, for purposes of F Y twenty five, um it's the committee's pleasure, we'll give the business office some direction here to go ahead with the recommended, uh, the recommendations for the resolution of the deficit. All right, if there's no, is there any further comment there or huh?
I have my hand.
Oh, sorry, Gloria, I didn't know if that was still from before.
Uh, we also, at some point, yeah, our next, our next meeting, we could talk about the last bit of the S R funds because we have to use those soon, right? Correct.
Okay.
We we basically have them all spent, but we can review, we'll bring that up. Laurie, if you could add that to the next school committee meeting, that would be great, please.
That's great. Yeah.
Especially as we've gotten towards the end of the year, we've spent down some of that, so that will be helpful.
Yeah, great point, Gloria. Thank you. Okay, um. The only other item I wanted to mention briefly, which is not related to this, but there are two events next week, there's the Athletic Awards Night on the twenty eighth and the I just had this pulled up too, and the um Scholarship Award Night on the thirtieth, both are at six P M um at the Middle High School. So I just wanted to note that the graduation is also on the first, which is Saturday, June first. So just so the committee is aware, there's, you know, some good events happening next week and I hope to see you all there. Um.
Memorial Day Parade?
Memorial Day Parade as well is on the so the Memorial Day wreath layings begin on Saturday, the twenty fifth at nine A M. And the V S O's website has some things on that, but the Memorial Day Parade, which the district does participate in and the school committee has participated in um is on the twenty seventh. And if you check your email, Carol, um the Veteran Service Officer sent us all the the logistics for that. So um if you can't find that in your inbox, just let me know and I can forward you what she sent over. Um, and certainly would love for you all to participate in that. It's a great event that, you know, uh, the town puts on for Memorial Day and gives the district some good visibility as well with the committee and and our students playing there. Um, it's always a great community event that's well attended. So if you can make it, that'd be great. Um. All right, if there's no further discussion, then I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye, Gloria Cabral.
I'm Melissa Pacheco.
Hi, Kristen Grescher.
Hi, Jason Pacheco.
I have in general. Okay, thank you, everyone. Important discussion and one that we will certainly continue. Uh, look forward to seeing you uh at the next meeting. Thank you.